Timbraz development senate action department for Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, four P M. If I could have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The salute to Mexico last.
I'm in Mexico.
United States of Mexico is a perfect union among united cultures.
We got road calls, we have an attendance for general manager Renee Hamilton, board member Terry Barzoni, board member Martha Hardy, chairman Dave Crewy, board member Ed Harstey, and we have on the phone board member Alan Burman. We need a motion on this. Mr. Chairman, make a motion whenever you approve the agenda as of. We have a motion. We have a motion in second, all those in favor? Motion carry. If you could have our manager submit a report, that'd be great.
So our, uh, our water production was four million, three hundred and eight thousand gallons. Uh, we sold one million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four gallons. Our water loss total was two million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand gallons, which is sixty-four percent water loss. The, uh, the crew fixed nine distribution water leaks. Uh, one was a major leak out on trout. We lost about one million, five hundred thousand gallons in a six-month period on that leak. The crew did three meter installs, they have completed fifty-one work orders. We got the pool filled with the new pump installed, ordered the test kits needed to operate the pool this year. Working on getting the bathrooms functioning for this season. Uh, we go clean them very thoroughly and is also working to reform everything. And the guys all worked on the roads on rocky trails, Surcingle, Mountaineer, Cedar and.
Thank you very much for your report. We're going to excuse Renee, we have a serious water leak. Her and the crew are on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the treasurer won't give him the report, he has a serious water leak.
Okay, as of today, the, uh, balance for the USA USDA accounts are all holding the same, it's one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents. And the, uh, the other two are seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four eighty cents and eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fourteen cents, those don't change. It's all USDA. The standby fee account is currently at seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, we spent eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars, ninety-five cents out of that since I last reported at the last meeting. Uh, so where it stands now is at seventeen thousand. The F and S account grew by three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. It's currently at fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. The emergency fund, um, has stayed the same, it's eighty-six thousand, twenty dollars and ninety-two cents, there's no changes in that. The general operating fund on paper is twenty-five thousand, uh, six dollars and sixty-nine cents. But, uh, payroll was done linked today and that's in the neighborhood of thirteen thousand. Uh, so, the, uh, actual account that's gonna be in the general operating fund is gonna be closer to twelve thousand dollars. I was told that, well, that we need to transfer approximately twenty thousand dollars to put into the, uh, general operating fund to carry us through for, uh, the bills and F and D yet. So, uh, I don't think any of those are covered by the F and S account. But, uh, we do currently have seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four in the, uh, standby fees. So, uh, the board needs to make a motion to transfer some money out of one of these, uh, only these two accounts and put it into the general operating fund.
There's a motion to transfer.
So, Jim, okay, but we might have to call a special week to do that. Other than that, there's no changes.
Okay, thank you very much. This does approve regular meeting minutes of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Is there any changes, additions or subtractions to those meeting minutes? If not, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve. Make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, as of.
We have a second? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. Okay, we have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Approve the TDC, Timbraz development council proposal managed by Timbraz community group. As a joint effort with TWSD. I think, uh, you guys are doing a stellar job on the pool. I was down there working with you guys and helping with the pump. And, uh, there's a lot of activity, a lot of, a lot of, uh, help from the community. And, uh, it's primarily focused through the TDC. So, good job, I appreciate your thing, I know everybody in the community that's around. Okay, we need a motion on this as well. We don't, we don't approve. Not approved, this is already done with that. No, I'm on two. Approve the TDC. Development council, it does approve that. Mind you. Mind you, you better not be. Anyway. Okay. I do have. Need to take into account that, you know, the, the proposal that TDC's presented to the board, uh, the one thing that would have to be, um, well, has to be considered is whether or not it complies with the anti-donation clause of the Mexico constitution. Because we're, since this is a public entity and that's a public, publicly owned building, um, that, that has to be considered when you come over. You would have to get a legal opinion on whether, on whether or not.
Has the lawyer responded?
What the lawyer said.
Okay, okay.
Oh, it would, you want to table this? I mean, it would, you can't prove it without. Be back from the lawyer. Yeah, you would know whether or not. Well, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and table this. What thank you was saying is that we have, we have possible conflict with the state on the anti-donation clause. And we need to make sure that we're doing what's right according to the state. I don't think it affects the performance of the TDC and what they're doing in the community. But we just need to work on some of the details and probably need a motion to table this until we get that.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can we go ahead and set a special session, agenda session? Let's discuss if we're ready, if we want to try to herd and think about all this at the same time. They think we can sit back now and get the session.
We have a closing, closing session.
We have to say, oh, seven, seven, seventy hours.
Okay, did everybody hear what's going on, we're going to?
No.
We're gonna have an open, are we gonna have a closed session executive meeting with a lawyer? As soon as we can possibly arrange it and, uh, get her determination. So that's where that goes, so.
So is that gonna hold up the opening of the pool and everything that's already been done, or that is still going?
No. I think everything will be normal. It's just the donation part, we just have to figure out the dollars, but other than that, it's a deal. I think everything, Bert can be ready down there, close to ready right now. Okay, we need to go ahead and make a motion for a session on, uh, on this. Okay, we're gonna move forward with the executive meeting on that session and we'll, we'll post that and, uh, get that taken care of as soon as possible. Uh, we need, we need to table this.
I have a motion to table, item number two.
We have a motion to table, agenda item number two, the proposal of managing Timbraz community group, we have a second. I'll second it. We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, aye. Everyone in favor, motion carries. Okay, before we move on to number three, we have the TDC to address the board. I'd like to say there's been a lot of rhetoric going on that really doesn't need to be. You have board members that have worked, and community members that have worked really hard to find solutions and pathways forward to the situation with the High Country and other outstanding things, and I think a lot of people in this room know that. Uh, it doesn't help that we have constant rhetoric on these items, that doesn't help us move forward at all. We need positive input, but we do not need negative half-truths, totally untrue's, and all kinds of banter published demeaning the process that we're trying to accomplish. That, that does nothing for nobody. Um, very few people know how hard we've worked to put something together that will work for the High Country, and I think it's going to be a great benefit to the community of Timbraz. With that, I would, uh, call on the TDC to address the board concerning the, concerning the negotiation with the DTI.
Okay, this, uh, this Timbraz development council proposal to TWSD board regarding the golf course and the lounge. TWSD has no desire to put their own or manage the golf course or building housing the High Country Lounge. As a result of a meeting held on Friday, the tenth, December twenty-fourth, that was last Friday, the Timbraz development council board voted to provide ownership of the golf course and the building housing the High Country Lounge. Attending the meeting were two TWSD board members, two DTI board members, and the entire TDC board. However, several, several criteria must be met in order for the transfer of ownership to become a reality. Number one, the TWSD would deed the golf course and the lounge building to the TWC at no cost to TWC or TDC. Inure requirements for the building would need to be determined. Improvements to the building to meet filling codes would need to be disclosed by TWSD. Aid from the community will be needed to bring the building up to code. TWSD was continued to provide water for the golf course at no cost. Community aid will be needed for golf course improvement. Timbraz development council is definitely interested in continued employment of the seven employees of High Country Lounge. TDC also recognizes the value of the High Country Lounge as to the events sponsored such as the barbecue cook-off, Valentine's Day, bar bar, et cetera, which benefits not only the lounge, but also other businesses is in Timbraz through the funds spent in the community. DTI will continue to own and operate the lounge and will rent the building from TDC under a future lease agreement. In addition, DTI will actively solicit volunteer donations to improve the lounge building. TDC does not have the fund available for the improvements at this time. These donations will be managed by Charlotte Daniel, TDC treasurer and board member, and will qualify for charitable donation through the five oh one C three of TDC. The goal of TDC will be to improve the golf course back to its former condition, making it something of which to be proud. The golf committee, which is part of TDC, will manage the golf course and help with the improvement. As with the lounge, tax deductible, deductible, community donation will be required to improve the course and will be managed by Charlotte Daniel. One ideal sponsoring a whole by individuals has already been proposed and will need to be investigated further. In order for all these ideals to work, cooperation will be required by TWSD, DTI, and TDC. Each entity will need to have the goal to make the above a reality and helping remove roadblocks to success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Timbraz development council has stepped up. The golf course and the High Country Lounge voting that we know is a bar. Uh, should have been in a nonprofit or held in private hands many, many years ago. At that time that it was deeded over the TWSD, we had no mechanism. There was nobody here in town that accepted of us. Uh, we cannot accept private donations to help with the refurbishment of the golf course and the building. However, they can. And we've already had some donors step forward with some interesting proposals like putting a bench on a green with a sign on it with a corporate sponsor on it, and they would, for instance, donate five hundred dollars a month for that green. So there's been a lot of good things happened, and of course, bringing the bar building, um, up to code uh, would be within their scope as well. And they, they are more able to take donations to make these things work as once again, we can. So this is really a great match. It'll give the hundred and twenty acres of the golf course and the market, um, to the TDC. That's kind of their mission here in Timbraz, Timbraz development council, that's what they do. And I think they're going to do a superb job of moving forward with this. Our job here, the TWSD, is supplying water, sustainable water service for the community. And taking care of our constituents and our subscribers for water. Uh, that's our prime focus and we want it to be our, become our only focus. Improving our water, as you all know, we have water problems here in town. We have a lot of dilapidated line, have breaks constantly. And this will let us get on with the repairs necessary on our water lines. So this is a great, I appreciate, um, the TDC stepping up. They've stepped up with the pool, they've stepped up with this. I just a huge appreciation for me and I'm sure for everybody else. Thank you very much. Agenda number four, update and discuss lease negotiations with DTI management for the High Country Lounge in Grillo. And of course, it would be our, our wish is that we can transfer over this property as soon as possible, your lease runs till June first. We would like to have that executed at or as soon as we can around the date of your expiration. We have to work out a few kinks, but that's where we would like to go with it. Uh, I don't think it would kill us to extend that by a few weeks if we need to. The warranty deed process doesn't seem extremely difficult, we do have to consult our lawyers and see if this is all above board with the, uh, state of Mexico. And it was deeded as a recreational, this deed, I read the deed, this, this land was deeded as a recreational use land. And basically, we're just continuing on the use of that land for recreational purposes to the benefit of all Timbraz, the entire Timbraz community and, uh, members of the golfing association, everyone else. So we're not really changing the, the content of the deed tonight, we're just putting it into the hands of people that can really do something. Um, is there any questions on this? Timbraz development council, uh, or the update on the lease negotiation after what we've discussed so far? Because basically, you guys, you guys got a discussion.
I don't really have a question, but I do have a comment.
Okay. So I, uh, appreciate Mr. Crewy coming to me initially and getting this conversation started. Uh, we stand, uh, as a board for DTI, uh, in favor of this, uh, proposal. Um, I would, uh, their, uh, proposal made a comment about the water, and I would just like to remind everybody here, uh, that the water that we use on the golf course is spring water that has passed beyond the, the, uh, treatment plant and has, uh, that use and it's also for the fire use as well. But that's, we're not taking treated water, we're not taking any of that, we don't have the ability really, uh, to put that under the golf course. Uh, and what was not in there, and I, and we've talked about this, is that for the golf course, uh, it's really a must that the equipment that's used for the golf course and that, that was purchased and has for the golf course goes with it. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Do we have any verdicts on this?
I do.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm confused. According to your bylaws, two point two D, it states that you are to establish and maintain the golf course. That's under your website. And two point two F, you are to maintain public leased facilities. Now, I was here a couple of months ago and I'm so happy that your tone is very different as far as wanting the community, uh, output and services, that's a good thing. But I'm really very confused as to you sitting there saying that, oh, we only take care of the water here. That's not true according to your website and your bylaws, so which is it? Please explain.
Well, if you look at the bylaws, okay? And you said, I'll start with A?
No, two point two D.
I'll start with A.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
A what?
Two point oh two A.
Okay.
Okay, it says, Timbraz Water and Sanitation District shall, shall, that means must. Okay, in legal terms, uh, manage all of the surface with groundwater. Uh, it also says under B, that we shall construct, maintain, repair, and manage a collection, storage, treatment, and delivery system or systems of potable water. Means TWSD must do that. Okay? Now, on C, it says, TWSD may construct, maintain, repair, collect, manage, a collection, storage, and delivery system or systems for untreated water. That's the water from the springs, that's the water that goes to the golf course. Okay? TWSD under, under number, uh, D, TWSD may, may establish, construct, and maintain park and recreational facilities such, such as the fishing lakes, golf course, recreation area, playground, swimming pools. Uh, and then B, it says, TWSD shall manage and maintain the Timbraz memorial park and cemetery. The difference, TWSD is required to maintain your water system, the cemetery, and your roads. That's what we're required to by the, by our bylaws. The other thing is we may.
And yet, you have it on the website as part of your services at the swimming pool, the golf course.
Change the website real quick.
Okay, well, that's, yeah.
The legal definition between. That's the legal definition of what the district is supposed, is required to do and can do. The legal definition between shall and may is drastic. It says shall is mandatory, may optional.
Yes, just this question first, thank you. Um, and I'm going off here. In the bylaws, does not, does it not say shall provide water for the first, yes? I just didn't go on that, that's fine.
So then there is no money that's been set aside for these different things that were on the website, is that right? You didn't have separate funds to maintain public leased facilities and so forth?
We use funds on proprietary nature. The funds go to what's needed first, if we have any leftover, which we generally don't, it would be spent on other things. But our budget is so sparse that we, in the massive majority of our funds on water and water, supplying water. And our water revenue must be spent on the water system. We can't spend it on anything else. The F and S fees can be spent on everything that's non-water, with the exception of trash. Trash, uh, due for that. But, uh, and then, just so y'all know, you know, there's not a huge amount of funds that's generated from the F and S fees. For the last five years, the district on average has only collected two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year to maintain all your non-water stuff, your roads, your golf course, your swimming pool, all of that. Okay? So far this year, year-to-date, from January first till today, the district's only collected thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars in F and S fees. Which we have budgeted forty thousand dollars to the pool. So, you know, that's the money we have to work with. Art, it's true, okay? I got it right here, Art. Art, hey, excuse me, Bill, out of the board, present it to the board. Thank you.
You forget about tax money you get.
Excuse me, would you have him ask for it after? We're not gonna put up with this. Not Art. We're not gonna put up with this.
Asking a question?
Bill, out of the board, bring it up front.
Everybody in the favor of this, we have one month.
Dave? Do we have a history of how it developed that TWSD started taking care of the things besides the water system and her?
Yes. This was deeded over years ago when the Timbraz Owners Association, uh, owned everything and they went bankrupt, they could no longer support it. The only viable option in town was to deed this to the TWSD, which was the only working organization in town at the time.
So the TP O A deeded it over?
Deeded it over to us. And, uh, it says if we're, if we, I think it goes further to say if we ever no longer want this property, then it's deeded back to them, they no longer exist. So there's nobody to deed it over to, uh, with the exception of the TDC, which is our local nonprofit, uh, organization here in town.
Dave, can I bring up one thing?
Yes, sir. You're exactly right from everything I've read. One of the things that did come up, case there's some kind of issue with anti-donation clause or whatever, um, to do, to continue the plan that gives a proposal, TDC proposal, is, uh, a one-hundred-year lease for one dollar. That's leave, if you had, if you had to go that way, I don't know that that's right, but I believe that's. Actually, if you had, if you had to go that way, I don't know that that's right, but I believe that's.
Well, everybody, everybody agrees that this needs to be over in Timbuktu hands. And it needs to be held by an organization that's going to do justice by the golf course and the building and everything else. We, we just can't do that with funds we have, we can't. As, as you know, we have a dinner prepared, but we just don't have the money. And actually, I think the way that, and I'm pretty sure the lawyer's going to tell us this, is that the way it's going to work, to be able to work is because if we deed it over to TDC, them being a nonprofit, right? That would work. You can't, we wouldn't be able to donate it to a private party, right? And I think that's how it, because of TDC being a nonprofit, I think that's how it's going to work. I think you're right. Just another idea that came down my head about. Okay, if there's, if there's no further questions on agenda item number four. Yes, ma'am.
Mainly for my own clarification that we're in, in this negotiation situation, they proposed to, you know, take on the golf course and the, and the High Country and the Pro Shop building. So do we have only until the first of June? You know, with the possible hope of extension or?
That's just been said. I, I think that's contingent on how the property transfer progresses, meeting with our lawyer and seeing. The warranty deed is a simple process, we just got to make sure all the Ts are crossed and the I forgot it. With the state of Mexico and our lawyer, make sure that everything is done properly. There are some exceptions we have to make in the warranty deed. We own a well and a pump house on the property, that's going to have to be exclusively ran and owned by TWSD. There's a few little exceptions and we're going to get through all of those. And it's not a complicated process, it really isn't. We have a good deed, spells out all the boundaries, the quantity of property. We have, we have everything that was given to us that we have to make some additions to. And hopefully we can get a warranty deed done fairly quickly. I wouldn't see any problem with a possible short extension, but we would have to vote on that as a board. But at this point, let's, let's don't go there, let's just try to get all this stuff.
Okay.
Because it's only seventeen days till the first.
I know it. You know, we're running, walking down to the water. What people don't realize, we've been working on this thing for a long time. And the tone is going to test bad, mother's going to test bad. We've been working on pathways and fixes, trying to get this done. We've thought about all kinds of scenarios, the TDC being absolutely the best scenario. If there's no further discussion on item number four, we're going to move on to number five, which is kind of a, a rehash, but it says, discuss approved alternative pathways for lease responsibility to High Country Lounge and Grill and of the golf course. We've already, we've already talked about all this, everybody knows we're going with it, going towards being deeded over the TDC. They've accepted the, the situation with the exception of some insurance, due diligence on insurance and a few minor things, but I think it's very doable that we get that done pretty quickly. And what we need is a motion to the E-Board with the transfer of the deed and counseling of the lawyer. On number five. So we need a motion before we can start investigating the transfer of deed. Alan, will you make a motion? Alan, did you make a motion? Okay, we have a motion from Alan Burmeyer to approve the alternative pathway direction to transfer the deed for the High Country Lounge Grill and the golf course over to the TDC. So we're going to start, the wheels rolling right now with this motion. Can we, can we have a motion, please? Oh, he made, we got a motion from Alan, sorry. Do we have a second? I'll second it. We have a second. Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
I'm going to say no because I don't have enough information. I, I'm going to wait to see what happens.
We have three yeses and one no motion carries. Going to move forward with the, the discovery process of getting this transferred over to the TDC. And we're going to work on that fervently so that we can get this accomplished quickly. So just to give you a little. Okay, we have a, a new item on the agenda. Discuss, approve, disapprove, Robert Ears request permission for TWSD property, one sixty basket as a parking lot, our parking area for the Memorial Day weekend. That's where we have a little log stack, where we park the equipment. It's called the Star Inn Golf Resort. How's good? Quiet later, quiet later. Quiet later, yes, okay. I guess they want to park it, it's just a big open week, bulldozed all the trees and cleaned it up, just an open, I don't see that.
That was a work area for the contract.
It was a safety area for the equipment, right? So the only, the only issue is there's a loud mess there. Do we need our deck somewhere? Okay, is, is that going to be us doing that? Just going to place a barricade. Even four barrels or something. Okay, we can get that. Okay, so we need a motion that we can do this. I make a motion, that would be pretty good. Okay, we have a motion to approve the parking area that's proposed on one sixty basket on Memorial Day weekend for parking for ATVs, whatever it is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. And we're going to get barricades around the well. And Spanky's going to hit that up too. Renee. Okay, Renee will get that.
Let the general manager hear that. I got one comment I got. Special leave, I can contact a lawyer and find out when she will be available. Sometimes tomorrow, you need to find out because I know, I don't want to set a precedent. I think if we were to do a special leave, man, the earliest we could do it, forty's out there. I think it's going to be there.
Okay, but I need to make sure that the lawyer can be available Saturday. Okay, the executive session on the pool will be coordinated with a lawyer per time schedule relevant and we'll set that and get that done as soon as possible. We have one more question over here?
I had a question, it was about the last comment, the last thing.
You feel a lot of slip, Reinhard, really?
I'm, I'm sorry, it's real quick. I guess living just down the street to one with approval for that being played.
Yes, sir.
Have they been notified that they need to follow the speed? If they don't, I would shut them.
I, 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 I think we need to get with the organizers and ask them to please public signs that they be.
I don't even know who they are.
Excuse me?
I don't even know who they are.
They're on Facebook. They're on Facebook if we can. Get a hold of the organizers, please. Yes, sir.
I've talked to the organizers and I mentioned those kind of things, speed limits, staying on the roads, not cutting across on trails here. We go all the things, they said they were going to release that as best they could, so. And I did that as a part of it, so.
And, yes, sir.
Just so everybody knows, there's six students here. During that event, we're going to have a lot of law enforcement presence down in this mound area as well. So we'll also be enforcing some of the OHB laws. So for the local clubs, if you're riding around, you have law enforcement, you're working OHB grant override. Everybody's going to be subject to the laws. So make sure that you have the registration, if I can read to you, all that stuff. That's going to be as.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we want to take this opportunity to thank the sheriffs that came out for today's evening in the sport, that they give our community. We want to support them in turn. The biggest thing on the ATVs, we see underage riders, multiple children on one ATV, no helmets on children, and excessive speed. That's the thing we seem to see all the time. You see five kids, oldest one being ten years old, on a big ATV going down the road, none of them have helmets on. So it's all of our responsibility to really take care of our children. If their parents don't know better, we know better, we need to call the sheriff, make them aware. I think that three hundred and seven dollar ticket or something per child without a helmet makes a pretty big impact. I want to thank everybody. If there's, if there's no more comments, Nina, did you have anything to add? Tony McWilliams, anything to add? Valerie, do you have anything to add?
I would just like to, you know, reach out to everybody because Timbuktu is such a great, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. And that's evident and there are repairs, you know, that are really minor that need to be done to the building up there. So anybody that, you know, can step up and, and help with those things, it would be highly appreciated.
Okay, we have a solicitation for anybody that can do any craft skills to help with the bar any way they possibly can. We do have an inspection report, that inspection report is available to Tony and that lists all the outstanding code, non-compliance issues that need to be corrected. We got it, Doc. Great. Peggy Tedford, do we have any further questions?
All I want to do is say thank you for all the volunteers that we have with the pool. We had approximately, at today, eighty hours volunteer hours and approximately seventeen people that volunteered. And it looks amazing and we're really excited about it. Memorial Weekend, we're going to have vendors, lots of vendors, there's people working on food trucks coming in. It's going to be big, we've got bouncing houses coming in. I've got raffle tickets for the swimming pool that's going to be given away. The raffle tickets are going to be five dollars or five for twenty. We've got, I had the pool passes for the season and they are forty-five dollars for ten swims or five dollars for a swim. And I think that's an absolutely great deal. But anyway, we've got, we're, we've got the pool ready, being open, inspections on the twenty seconds, so it's going to be amazing. Raise it for now, I know you're going.
What can I say?
Sorry?
What can I say to you?
Yes, the work day is, we've got a work day coming up Saturday to clean the golf course. All volunteers are welcome. We need all kinds of volunteers. We're going to need volunteers Memorial Weekend, doing out with some of the things that we're doing, the vendors, like we're going to have snow cone machine and all that stuff. That way we can rotate people in your office, we've got a bake sale going on to raise money for the team and for the pool.
And can they drop donations off at the TDC office?
Yes, they can.
Okay, we can drop donations off at the TDC office. And we appreciate everyone's support, I know they do too. They're a viable part of our community and they're making great things happen. Once again, we appreciate the TDC.
Absolutely. On that Saturday that all the events are going to go on, we're going to have the pool closed during the day just for safety purposes for the children. There'll be lots of kids running around, lots of vehicles, it's just we don't want anyone to get hurt. We are going to open the pool that later afternoon from three to seven because the events are over at five. So it'll be open three to seven on that Saturday, Memorial Weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment, I mean, you've got, this is, yeah, for seven here, sorry. The TDC is not open, because they're not open a lot of hours, and I'm not exactly sure those are hours. I have a chance if.
At the store, yeah, at, at busy bee, we've had, busy bee was one of our sponsors. So they're helping, they're going to help us out tremendously with the pool.
Do we have envelopes for those donations?
Oh, we can get some.
Okay, let's get some donations, envelopes. Do we have a drop box at the office or no?
Uh, not yet, no.
Not yet, but we're going to work for that. Okay, great. Okay, well, they're asking for your support. We appreciate everyone that was in attendance today, we appreciate all the comments. Appreciate, this is how we're going to work moving forward, thank you very much, worked well. Just, it, it kind of fine tunes this. Go ahead, Alan?
Yeah, I, I would just like to add my thanks for all the people that worked on the pool and worked off with some fire.
Thank you, Alan, saying, thanks to all the firefighters, thanks for all the people putting out the fire, thanks for everybody coming together to make the pool a reality this year. I can't see, yes, ma'am?
I was just going to say, I do have a couple signup sheets back there to help with the TDC memorial events. If you want to volunteer, there's a sheet for that. If you want to donate something to the bake sale, there's a signup sheet for that. And also for anybody, if you want to make an electronic donation to TDC, on their website, timbuktu.org, there is a donate button on the website.
Did everybody hear that? You can go on tdc.org and donate money online. They need volunteers, they need people to pay, is that right?
We're going to be having that bake sale, there's a signup sheet. Anybody wants to sign up for the bake sale or volunteer?
Fantastic. Anyway, as I was saying, thank you everyone for attending today. We're here for the community and I want to make no mistake that people understand otherwise. We're here for the community, the better of the community, and the best way we can do that as a board, primary focus being water supply to the community. But we want, everyone on this board wants to see Timbuktu thrive and do well. So thank you very much.